Mr. Chairman, may we all stand? If I could take a point of privilege and get the coach to give me one player to help me to lead me in the pledge, and then I want to get Reverend Hurst to lead us in the invocation. Y'all, give me, give me a player. There we go. Which we do together, okay? All right. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reverend Hurst?
Let us, let us pray. God almighty, we come before you in a sense of awe because you are sovereign, you are totally in control. We thank you for a day that we've never seen nor experienced before, and we thank you for your amazing grace. We ask, oh Lord, that you bless our county commissioners, continue to give them wisdom to lead this county. We thank you so much for this baseball team that won the state, and we thank you for the lessons of life they're learning on the field. Now bless this meeting. You say blessed are the peacemakers, for they should be called the children of God. We ask it all now in the strong and mighty name of Jesus, our blessed redeemer and our soon coming king. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Commissioners, for those who have helped you participate tonight. Before we adopt, we need to add an item tonight, and that is the baseball team.
Chairman, I make that motion that we add the, uh, our Parks and Rec team to the agenda?
Okay. All right, we added that tonight. That would be number four. Four be five. Five be six, six be seven, seven be eight, and eight be nine. That's motion second. I had time to consider. Would I, or suppose I have it? All right. Consent, we'll have one item tonight, was to wish of this board.
Making motion to approve.
The second?
Second.
Motion second to approve, item number two ought to have time to consider. All in favor, would I? All right, pose. I have it. Tax administration, Ms. Dattley. Dattley?
Good evening Commissioners and members of the board. And tonight I have one release. It's a DOT acreage correction in a sum amount of $247.
Okay. The motion to approve release.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
The second? Second. Motion second to approve release. All had time to consider. All in favor, would I? Suppose I have it. Thank you, Ms. Dattley.
Total collected, for tax collector report, the total collected for the month of June, current year was $230,685.69, ending our year at a 97.17% rate compared to a 97.7% rate last year. On prior years was $91,125.50, ending the year at a 61.88% rate compared to a 59.57% rate last year. Total collected for the month of June was $321,811.19.
You keep going up. That's great. Thank you. To accept bid for surplus property, click to the board.
Uh, yes, this is a resolution accepting the offer of a bid on surplus property. Uh, the property is 202 North Highland Road, parcel number 294310001180. The bid amount is for $6,647.24. That does include the, uh, covered the taxes as well as the costs. And there was no upset bids during the period.
Okay. Wish of the board accept the bid? I mean, we accept, second?
Second.
Motion second to accept the bid. All in favor, would I?
All right.
Pose. Thank you. All right, resolution. Honor winner, yes sir.
Moved everybody else down. I changed my agenda. You didn't change yours.
That's really just five of us.
Just the baseball.
Yeah. That's really just five of us. Isn't that nice? Yeah. I was talking, Mr. Hunt.
It's fine, Chairman.
Let me just, the coach. Has someone talking maybe one year younger? Let me have the coach to come up at this time of this great team, of the coaches. Give me just a minute now, yeah?
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
First of all, can I have all my boys stand, please? So this right here, um, this is your 14-year-old Dixie Boys state champions, so I think they should get a... They went six and one this whole tournament. Um, shouldn't have lost the first one. We'll get that later. But, um, they, they fought hard. Matter of fact, we were down one game in the last inning. They came back and put up like eight runs to win the game against a very talented team. Um, so I mean, they deserve all the credit. Uh, the reason we here, um, I think all y'all had this, had this moment. Okay. Um, so the whole county 14-year-old baseball team, uh, we earned an incredible opportunity to represent our community, um, at the 2025 World Series in Hattiesburg, Mississippi, uh, from July 26th to July 30th. Um, so we're here reaching out to seek your support, um, in helping these kids dream a reality, uh, for our dedicated group of young athletes. Uh, so on your paper, you can see we have lodging, um, so hotel accommodations for players and coaches throughout the tournament. Uh, we're looking at six rooms for the players, three rooms for the coaches. Um, and you can see the total of that on the paper as well, too. Uh, we also have travel expenses. Uh, we have a couple options for those. Um, I don't know if y'all have this other paper right here. Okay. Um, so we have travel expenses, and then we have meals, um, trying to do like a per diem for the kids, so like $50 a day. Um, 10 for breakfast, 20 for lunch and dinner. Um, so I mean, our team is committed to represent Hope County. Um, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. It's never been done. Um, so we're just hoping for some, for some support, some help.
Mr. How many days total you looking at leaving and returning back home?
Uh, se- six days.
Six days.
Yes, sir.
That's the whole extent of the tournament.
Yes, sir. The whole extent of the tournament. Uh, it can be cut short. Yes, sir. Double elimination.
Uh, well, you said that the whole term, cause that's faith. We want y'all to be there the whole term.
Yes, sir.
Did you tell everybody where you were going?
Uh, we're going to Hattiesburg, Mississippi. So it's about a 12-hour trip. Um, so we're looking to depart. Uh, it was 8:00 p.m. Thursday. We probably gonna push that up, um, earlier Thursday, but yes, sir. We're going to Hattiesburg, Mississippi, 12 hours. Yes, sir.
When is the opening?
Um, the opening is Friday. That Friday.
Friday morning?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah, sir.
Okay. Um, Commissioners and, and community parents, coaches, and players, first of all, I want to say congratulations. You know, uh, me and Alan and, and a few others, we think we were athletes, but we never did what you guys did. So what you guys has done has, has been truly amazing. Uh, we really appreciate that. We, we are honored that, the fact that we got a team actually going to the 2025 World Series. Sometimes we see it on TV, but to have someone from home to go is, is, man, you, you guys did outstanding job. I gotta take my hats off to the coaches, because you coached those young men, and you did outstanding job. We really appreciate that. You all came before us last year when y'all went to the state because y'all had an outstanding season. And again, we, we want to just say thank you to the, uh, parents as well, cause everybody, it was a team effort. From the, from the parents, making sure they get to practice, and coaches doing their job, and the players practicing hard and working hard every day. So we just, you know, we're extremely proud of you guys.
And I do want to say, uh, our backed by our assistant coaches, uh, Ronald Womack and Sammy McNair as well, too, so.
Good.
Yeah, I just want, yes, sir.
And he's our children, and we have everything and our power to support them, and we will, um, do that tonight. Uh, Ms. Manager, you have any recommendation?
Um, whatever the wish of the board is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like for us to do it like we did before. You know, we allowed the manager to get with Parks and Rec, um, Mr. Baldwin there and, um, get with the coaches, and they go ahead and line everything up. And we just, I think what we did the last time, we just approved an amount.
I think it was 20,000.
And then the, then the manager worked all that out. I don't think they spent all that the last time.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know, um, uh, let her, uh, get with them and, cause what we, what we can do is, as the chairman mentioned, we want to make sure that our players are, their travels taken care of, their meals and their rooms are taken care of along with the coaches. So we can, we can provide that, you know, for them, um, and the transportation they can get with the manager, and she can, um, decide, you know, with them on what's the best mode of transportation and everything. So I would, uh, entertain a motion that we allow the county manager, uh, to take care of it, and, uh, maybe just not, um, and just give her an amount.
Mr. Uh, Commissioner Hunt, could I add to that?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, the coach is gonna be busy worrying about the players, getting the players ready, and the players gonna be worried about playing and, and getting ready to play. I think that we need a representation from Parks and Rec. Uh, Mr. Baldwin, he's our baseball director. I would like for him to go as well to represent Hope County. You gotta have somebody there that's looking out for, for the county while the coach is getting ready to play, getting ready to coach for the players, and the players to get ready to focus on playing. I would like to have Mr. Baldwin go on this trip as well to represent us, uh...
I think someone from Parks and Rec should be there to represent, in case we have some type of issue, they can always step in.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
If there's a question about something.
Yes, sir.
I totally agree with that, that we add him to the list, uh, with the coaches and everything.
And I would love to get that call back from y'all saying, hey, y'all boymen need to fly here. We want it all. And we're not, then we'll fly. We're on our way. That'd be great. I think both of you have very good idea, and I support all those ideas. I think we ought to start right away. You leaving this Friday?
This Thursday.
This Thursday? Okay. We got a couple of days. Let's do it.
Yeah, yeah. We, we can, um, we can put the motion up to 20,000, but if, Ms. Chairman, I want to give my county managers some latitude in case.
Okay.
We'll put that as an amount, but if she needs to go over that, she can have the authority to go over that, okay?
I, I agree. I second that motion.
Yes, sir.
I, I second the motion up to 20,000 with the county manager having the latitude. Once she begins negotiating with Parks and Rec to be able to go over, uh, and just update the board at a later time. Sounds great. Let's do it. We want y'all to go, and we want you to be safe, have fun, enjoy yourself, and look for y'all to return back home, every one of you, safe.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I wanted, I definitely wanted a second Commissioner Hunt's motion, uh, to go up to 20,000, um, be- because I have, uh, concerns about the possibility of a parent or a coach driving 11 hours, 12 hours, if they're not, uh, accustomed to doing that. And so I, I know if I just happen to be coaching, and you want me to drive our most precious commodities for 12 hours, and I'm not used to doing that.
Sure.
That's too much of a liability to have one on my shoulders. And so if there's a professional who has a professional CDL who own a daily basis, they make a living driving 11, 12 hours, I would trust them, uh, with our most precious commodities.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, we, we of course wouldn't want to spend this. We, we all kind of looked at the possibility of events. We all agreed that'd be a great, uh, cost savings. Um, but I don't think the $10,000 difference or whatever, uh, would be worth us being upwary about the possibility of someone falling asleep driving 11, 12 hours. Cause if they leave at 8:00 p.m., 11, 12 hours, you driving throughout the entire night. And so, um, you know, Mr. Chairman, I just would ask that our board would make sure that we have a professional driver to drive these kids, because the coaches don't need to be wary, uh, in, in taking all these breaks. They need, they need to be able to be peaceful and get their mind ready for the game, uh, because this is a big moment. Not just for the players, for the coaches, and for the county. Uh, you know, we're very proud of what you all doing. I don't know who came up with this logo y'all have in your hats, and I'm trying not to look at it. I'm trying not, I'm trying not to look at it, man.
Yeah, me too, man.
I'm trying not to look at it. But, but we, we are excited about what you all doing. Uh, I'm sure some of us will be looking at our schedules to see if we can be in Hattiesburg, uh, sometime this weekend to, to cheer you all on. You know, but, uh, like the vice chairman said, I, I played baseball throughout all my younger years, and we never made it out of the first, uh, the first journey.
That's right.
If we double elimination, we, we knew we were good for two games. We didn't make no plans to stay three, four days. We go down to Robinson County. That was it.
That was it.
You know, so for you all to be beating Richmond County and Dupont County, all these counties, you all must can play some baseball. You know, so.
I can play baseball, huh?
My, my, my request, my only request, if we approve this many for you all, my only request is that you all keep staying here in Hope County and play for them Bucks one day. I, I want to see you all on that varsity baseball field, beating up on Richmond County and Pinecrest. Can you all beat it up? Can you all beat it up? I want to see you beating up on Scotland County. Oh, oh, excuse me. I, I saw the Scotland County superintendent here. I want you to beat Richmond County. And, and play well against Scotland. Uh, but, hey, we're proud of you all, guys, and we look forward to checking you all out. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that is my comment.
And this is great. Alan, you have very good point. To get y'all in a group, on a bus, professional driver to go together as a fellowship, it'd be great. Keep the team together from Hope all the way to the ballgame. Will you stay together, learn each other, work together as a team on this bus, so how will we do this together rather than each individual in a vehicle? It'd be great for all of us and most safe that we group together and stay together, play together, talk together. You have a great time. So there been a motion and a second.
Chairman, we have requests for you all when, when the meeting is over out front.
Yeah, don't leave. Yeah, don't leave.
And I do, I do want to, uh, publicly, publicly thank our baseball director, uh, Justin Baldwin.
Oh, yeah.
Cause I, I know I've been stressing him out about this team, uh, and about all this stuff, but I appreciate it, man. You put in a lot of work for us, too.
He's going with you. He'll be there with you guys.
I've been saying for a long time, Hope County is the greatest in the state of North Carolina. Once again, y'all proved me right. Thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. We take care of this team. Y'all have heard it, had comments, all in favor, but would I?
All right.
Pose. I, you on your way. Bye-bye. Five Z's there. Okay?
Oh, oh, yeah, we gotta take pictures, too.
We not finished yet. Yeah, and our manager not finished with y'all yet.
Yeah, we done. We not done counting, man. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You gotta decide it. You got caught up.
It's on you now.
Jeremiah, come up for a second. I know he always does that.
This is important person now.
Yeah, he always does that.
She controls the money now.
She controls the money.
Yeah. So Jeremiah, um, myself and staff, um, created something for your team. You helped. So I'm the visual and the county produced something for your staff, so we have it up front.
That's right.
Or you guys can come up, because it's from the board of commissioners, that I have something created for the team.
Good job. Thank, thank, thank you.
So they have their, don't pick it up so quickly, Jeremiah.
I say Hope County.
Uh, I, I have this problem, that he loves to pick up stuff. Jeremiah, if I call out their names, and you pick up the bag for him, so we can get it to the right person.
That's right. I got you.
Number 50. Number 50, Justin Wom- Womack.
Chairman, I'm gonna tell you how old I am.
Tell me.
I coached his daddy in Little League.
You play old, son.
Just FYI, Justin Womack last year at the state tournament broke the state record for home run dirty.
Number 12, RJ Womack. And just as a FYI, this is one of our employees on both of these, nephew and son. Mason Lee, number 21. Braylon Newkirk, number 10. John Oxendine, number 9. Trevor Bullard, number 14.
Congratulations.
Tristan Pullard, number 4. Tristan Locklear, number 1. T'Kobe Locklear, number 7. Mark Chavis, number 11. Kayden Chavis, number 1. Matthew Jones, number 3. And Bradley Wright, number 5.
Thank you, man. Good job. Good job, man. You're in the winner.
Huh? You try to start it?
Yeah. I didn't really start it. I didn't really fly it. I'm serious.
My wife let me go.
You got a wife now, son. You got a wife now. Yeah, let's do that.
Kind of just for a weekend.
Let's go.
Father decided to come back soon.
Yeah, come back soon, you want Mr. Church.
Yeah. How long did I have to church? How long did the train get me there?
No. You missed the whole thing, you didn't have time to come back.
Again, thank you, uh, coaches, uh, team, our parents for letting them play and participate. Thank each of you for playing, playing a great part in what just happened. As our children, our citizens, thank you very much for holding up the name of Hope County. We really appreciate that cause you represent Hope County. You represent each of us and you represent local government tonight and we know that you do us well. So thank you so much. We're glad to have certainly, I think, two of those who works for Hope County Park Recreation. It shows us what we have, working for us on staff, on this tight and this kind of, uh, activities going on. So thank you very much for what you do and how you do it tonight. Thank you. Miss Manager, you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Have asked us, you finished, not cheating behind me. Alrighty. Okay, we have one other item. We have another hero of Hope County that actually saved a individual life. Miss Manager, you want to participate in that?
Yes, I will. I don't know if the sheriff is here, but Brian, Sheriff, you here? Sheriff and Brian?
Yeah, outside.
So just to give the, um, board of commissioners a little bit of background. I received an email from our fire marshal, Brian Marley. Come up, Sheriff. Um, and he, um, sent me an email to let me know what an outstanding job, um, Lee Black did. And he sent it to me and the sheriff to let us know, um, what Lee Black did. Um, and I made sure I let the board of commissioners know, um, that, um, he did an outstanding job, Sheriff and I. So I contacted Sheriff and said that we wanted to honor Lee Black. So Sheriff is here, um, and we always want to make sure that we honor our employees when they do such a good job. So I let the sheriff know we wanted to honor Lee.
Tell us about it.
So, um, I, I'll start out if you don't mind, Sheriff, and I'll turn it over to the sheriff. Um, I, I don't know if y'all have seen this, but I'll get here and read it so everybody in the audience can, can hear. Um, this is the, uh, email that I sent Sheriff and, uh, the county manager, Miss Eaton. Um, it was dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Sheriff, on the morning of July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, approximately eight twenty-four, zero eight twenty-four hours, Tyler Town Fire Department was dispatched to report a destruction fire at twenty-eight seventy-one Dot Brown Road. Multiple units from multiple agencies within Hope County responded to assist Tyler Town Fire Department, to include the Hope County Sheriff's Office and Hope County Fire Marshal's Office. I, Brian A. Marley, Fire Marshal, responded to the address above to assist. Upon my arrival, I observed a, what we call a single story, single family dwelling, uh, residence with smoke showing from the address side of the house. Uh, Deputy Medic Lee Black arrived prior to my arrival. Upon approaching the residence, I encountered, um, Deputy Medic Lee Black removing an occupant from the structure to an area of safety. Tyler Town Fire Department arrived on scene and the fire was brought under control quickly and a search for other occupants, occupants, uh, was completed. The occupant was transferred to Cape Valley EMS and transported to the hospital. And in my professional opinion, the quick actions of Deputy Medic Lee Black going above and beyond contributed to a life saved.
Good. Let me also ask the chief of Tyler Town, please come. This was in your district. And then the sheriff officer is going to speak to us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You've known, been knowing my brother Lee a long time. And I'm quite sure he's been asked that question. And he's asked that question many times. I've been asked that question and I've answered that question many times. Am I my brother's keeper? Well, Lee proved that the other day. That's what we are. Our call is to look after those that's not so fortunate as others. And I'm quite sure in this room, you look around, there's other members and other people in here, too, have answered that call. Am I my brother's keeper? The question should come simple. Yes, I am. I'm not feeling too well, but I'm here.
Thank you, man.
Because I, I wanted to be here to let Lee know that we appreciate what he's done.
Thank you.
His reward goes beyond. It's ironic that I've been overseas and see people running out of million dollar homes. And five of them don't even know who live there running in. And I sometimes it amazes me and then I stop and I think, I said, that's what we do.
That's right.
That's, that's what it's all about. Looking out for your mankind. Lee, Sheriff, thank you for putting this organization together. And putting such great fine people in it, like Lee. Lee, I reached out to that eighty-two-year-old man today. He's doing fine.
Good.
He's coming along well.
Good.
Now, he's not here tonight, but I would do something that he's not able to do. I'm gonna give Lee, I'm gonna give you a great big hug for him.
Sheriff, tell us about your impact.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So I'm not going to stand up here long because I know he's, I'm gonna stand up here just long enough so you can get yourself together. That's what I'm gonna do. But anyway, um, in the times that we're living in, we're living in the times where we have to be innovative. Because you don't have the volunteers like you used to have anymore.
That's right.
So, um, so myself along with our team, you know, we sit at the table every week thinking of how can we better serve this county and keep everybody safe with, with the rapid growth that we're having. And so the deputy medic program, because of my medical background, um, I said, you know what? We can benefit this in our county. It's the first of its kind in the wholesale of North Carolina. We don't have a hit, nobody's ever done it before, but it just makes sense, right? So the deputies are the first ones to show up on scene, to red, any kind of red. The deputies are the first ones to show up on scene. But it just so happens I have three to four certified paramedics that are there to do a prevention. So it just makes sense, why not just get them cross-trained? You know, see how I can work it out with the county manager, commissioners? Let's get this liability thing covered and let's just provide this service to our citizens because it's well worth the tax dollars, a hundred percent. When someone loses their life, who cares about money? It's your life and your safety is on the line.
Absolutely.
That's what we're here to do, is to take care of our citizens. And with this program that's been implemented, we've been to NC State, Wake Forest Baptist, talking about this program. Um, I've even there reached out from, uh, Connecticut, from American Heart Association to, so people can find out more about what we do here. So, um, chairman has stated before, Hope County is the best county. And the sheriff's office is going to make sure that it stays that way as far as the law enforcement aspect of it. We're going to give top tier service to our citizens here in Hope County. And, um, and we're not going to back down, you know, we're going to be resilient and we're going to take care of our people. That's why we're full of staff at this point, at the jail and sheriff's office. So you should have a lot to be proud of with the people that you have serving you. Um, but now it looks like that you got yourself together. And it's okay to cry because I cry sometimes too because that's what real men do. You know, we let it out.
I really don't know what to say other than just say, uh, thank everyone here.
Thank you.
County commissioners, uh, fire marshal, sheriff, all of our staff, administrative staff, we're a team. Everybody here is a team.
Thank you.
Everybody in this county is a team. I've been doing public safety in this county since nineteen eighty-five. And like the sheriff said, you know, we have limited resources in this county and we have to do what we can do. And with my background in fire rescue, EMS, law enforcement, I try to implement and utilize my non-knowledge, my training and my abilities to help every citizen in this county when on or off duty, when, when the need arises. And that's just what I'm doing, I'm just doing my job.
Thank you.
Help our community and our county be the best that it can be.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mister, let me show that y'all come back, we want to make this about your night, by giving you a resolution from Hope County, showing that this night, this is a special night that will go into the local government history, that will be there forever, that we resolutions you for this night for the job that was well done. We want to show that so that it go into the minutes of Hope County. Also that it will stand forever that this night is a night that we honor you for being the hero that you are and serving our citizens in Hope County. The board, please come.
Best vice chair, this is on the job we pay you for. Oh, gee. It's truly an honor on behalf of Hope County, its sixty thousand plus citizens, to recognize a man who has actually went beyond the call of duty to, to save one of us. He's truly our brother and he is truly our brother's keeper. And we really appreciate you and all the work you've done. Thank you, sir. The res- resolution reads, in honor of Deputy Medic Lee Black for his heroic actions. Whereas on the morning of July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at approximately eight twenty-four A M, Tyler Town Fire Department was dispatched to report a structure fire at twenty-eight seventy-one Dot Brown Road in Hope County, North Carolina. And whereas multiple units from across the county responded, including the Hope County Sheriff's Office and the Hope County Fire Marshal's Office, in support of the Tyler Town Fire Department's captain. And whereas upon arrival at the scene, Fire Marshal Brian A. Marley observed a single-story, single-family dwelling with smoke showing from the address side of the structure. And whereas prior to the arrival of the fire suppression unit, Deputy Medic Lee Black had already arrived on the scene and was observed courageously removing an occupant from the burning structure to a safe area despite the clear and present danger to his own life. And whereas the prompt and selfless actions of Deputy Medic Black were instrumental in preserving the life of the occupant, who was later transported to the hospital by Cape Valley EMS for medical care. And whereas such acts of valor and quick decision-making exemplify the high standards of dedication, professionalism, and the service to the residents of Hope County. Now, if therefore be it resolved, the board of commissioners of Hope County hereby recognizes and commends Deputy Medic Lee Black for his bravery and heroic conduct on July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And be it further resolved that this revolution of bravery be entered into the official records presented to Deputy Lee Black as a symbol of the county's deepest appreciation and respect for your lifesavers action. This day, James Lee's chairman, Harry Southern Vice Chairman, Commissioner Tony Hunt, Commissioner Mary McCollum, Commissioner Alan Thomas Junior, attested to by clerk of the board, Janita Smith. Thank you, sir.
Please, with me. Got you. Come on.
Sheriff.
Got you. All officers that like to come?
Come on. Come on, Chief. I want to make a statement, come on, there you go. There you go. That's right.
Thank you, man. We'll see you tomorrow. Next time.
I'm glad y'all said that. Thank you, we almost made the case. Thank you so much. Miss Manager, it's your turn.
I have nothing, I think I've done enough pretty nicely.
Uh, you've done a good job. We ask it you not to leave. We have refreshment out for our team tonight and also Mister Lee Black and the sheriff department may go and be with us as we go out and celebrate them and our team tonight. So team, please don't leave. We have refreshment outside for you and for those who we recognize tonight, of all of us. So please stay with us. I also ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Mister Chairman, just before we adjourn, I would like to congratulate the team again, uh, for winning and, um, Mister Black for Deputy Black for all that he's done for our county and the leadership for the sheriff and the fire department of Tyler Town and all those folks. We thank them for, uh, being there for somebody else when they needed it. You know, a lot of nights you leave from here, uh, kind of discouraged about things, but tonight I leave happy because I know that we've got a good baseball team headed down to Mississippi to represent Hope County, North Carolina, and it makes me feel good. Thank you. And thank you, Mister Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other comment for any Boilmen? If not, there's motion to adjourn.
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
All good that I, uh, pose? Good night.